Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 31st, 2016 zoning board of appeals meeting. I officially called the meeting to order. First order of business, well, actually, it's just this. Okay, so 60, we've got, well, no, it's not on the agenda, so we'll go right to the, we'll follow the, we'll follow the agenda. So there's an appeal on, I guess, a lack of enforcement, of a complaint for zoning enforcement, and to the building inspector. And when that happens, so if a citizen makes a complaint and to the building inspector and would like some zoning, thank you, some zoning enforced in town, and if the building inspector either denies or doesn't, or grants it, if you want to appeal that, you appeal to us, to the zoning board of appeals. We have this sort of quasi judicial role that we play. And so we're essentially having almost a trial, a bench trial tonight. So, having said that, this is for, does someone have the actual public notice? Because I printed everything but the public notice.
Oh, that I didn't print.
Do not. Okay, well.
I think I might have.
There we go.
I have the legal notice.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah. Okay, so I'll just read this. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing regarding a petition for relief from the building commissioner's zoning determination of request for enforcement at 60 Pleasant Street, Ashland, Massachusetts, 01721. The petition has been submitted on behalf of the Spinazola's, am I saying that right? Spinazola? Spinazola Revocable Trust, Mary T. Spinazola, the settler, and Brett N. Spinazola, a co-trustee, 9-13 Forest Ave., Ashland, Mass., 01721. A public hearing regarding this petition will be held on Thursday, March 31st, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall 101, Main Street, Ashland, Mass. We had a conflict, thus we are down in this room instead. Copies of the petition are available for public review at the town planner's office, and it has the hours. For more information, contact Nat Strasberg and his contact information. So with that, I'm going to call this hearing to order, and we don't have our names in front of us, so why don't we just go, we'll start at the end, just say your name for the record.
Stuart Segal.
Tom McNulty.
Stanley Deener.
Phil Jack.
John Trefeathen.
Pete Kopecky.
Paul Haverty from Blatnovabrowski Mead and Tallemann, Town Council.
Mike Christofolli, Building Commissioner.
I'm not part of that.
Yeah, right, right, that's fine. All right. And so, I think the way we'll do this, we'll have, I was going to say plaintiff, but it's not the plaintiff, we'll have the, the petitioner submit their, and who is the petitioner? Okay. And we've got, that's the mic for, okay, perfect. So have the petitioner sort of state their case. The, yeah, sure. Point of order.
Who's sitting?
Oh, that's a good question, actually. It'd be myself and who else?
Match four.
Well, no, we have three.
Okay, you can sit three, you can sit four.
Well, we only have three full-time members, so that's, that's the max we can have, and that's what we always do. So, are you guys, yes?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So it'll be us three.
Tom, Stan, and Phil.
Tell them who it is.
So Phil Jack will sit.
Stanley Deener.
And Tom McNulty.
Okay. For the record. Okay, so why don't you go ahead and state your, state your position?
Great. Hi, I'm Jacqueline Astro Hathaway. I'm Jackie. I'm representing the petitioner, who is seller Mary T. Spinazola, who is 92, a lifelong resident of Ashland, and has resided at 9-13 Forest Avenue since 1949. Her grandson Brett Spinazola is one of the co-trustees, so on their behalf of submitting this. Just to give you folks just a little procedural background on this, so since, and, you know, and what I'm going to do is also just to aid, is just also, I have pictures of stuff, so just to help. So since 1949, the property which we're referring to is 60 Pleasant Street, the old Fenwall Building, has always had on this left side of it, of the building, if you're facing into the left, as Forest Avenue abuts it, has always looked like this. Now, this is a picture from Google Earth since October, this is dated October 2013. And the issue here has to do with, it's all fenced off, and there's a grassy area there. It has always, it's been that way, and Mrs. Spinazola can attest to that. In 2014, 60 Pleasant Realty, and the manager of that is John Dudley, who is on our planning board, purchased the property in March of 2014.
I think it, just, just for the record, I might read in your petition, just to, so just to give the background exactly, and then you can, you're jumping right into it, but just so people watching will know.
Sure, no, that's fine.
So, the actual petition on appeal reads in part as follows. Detailed description of relief, the relief that's being sought is, enforcement of the zoning bylaws is requested from the building commissioner's failure or refusal to enforce the following bylaws. And they enumerate 1 through 9, which I'll read. One, the removal of the fence, grass, and new ingress egress on the Forest Avenue side of the 60 Pleasant Street building, which expands the use of the building without site plan review. Two, the lack of proper screening and buffering of these outside businesses, including the unsightly large industrial dumpster that is used for the disposal of materials from these new businesses as required by section 5.4 of the bylaws requiring landscaped buffer, buffer areas, the requirements more specifically set forth in sections 5.42 and 5.43. Three, the lack of proper shielding of the external illumination which shine directly, brightly, and steadily through the night, directly into plaintiff's front windows. Four, the failure of the trucks which deliver materials to these businesses to accomplish all turning maneuvers on the premises in accordance with section 5.2.3 of the bylaws, which caused the continuous trespassing of these trucks onto my client's property. Five, the lack of proper screening of these businesses, loading areas pursuant to section 5.2.5, whereby these loading areas shall be screened in accordance with section 5.4 as aforementioned. Six, the prohibited signs at the corner of Forest Ave. and Pleasant Street advertising these new businesses in violations of the provisions of section 5.213. Was that, I think that might actually have been a typo, was that supposed to be 5.313? Should I read somewhere? But in any event.
I think that's correct.
Yeah. Seven, the dumping of off-site building materials in the dumpster which directly faces the petitioner's property at 9-11 Forest Ave. Eight, the noise generated by the smashing of glass and materials in the dumpster, and the noise from the delivery trucks and contractors occurring prior to 7:00 AM and after 7:00 PM on Sundays. And nine, the replacement of a grassed area on the Forest Avenue side of the building with an impervious material which directly causes surface water runoff and the flooding of Forest Ave. And the reason I wanted to read those is because we have, and have you received a memo from Town Council?
I did today.
So, as a, sort of a, as a baseline issue here, I think the board should probably consider which of these we're going to hear, so that when you start giving your testimony here, it's relevant to, you know, to the sections 1 through 9 that we're actually going to hear. And so, three sitting members, have you had a chance to read the Town Council?
Yes.
So, it's Town Council's opinion that, and correct me if I'm getting the numbers wrong, but that, I don't have, which ones are not, should not, are not properly before us right now? I know it's the last three.
1, 7, 8, and 9 on the petition.
1, 7, 8, and 9.
But.
And that's, I'll let you make your case in one second. So, and the reasoning behind that is that we could only hear an appeal on issues that were presented to the building inspector, and they were not presented for enforcement. And so they're not ripe, so to speak. So, do you want to respond to that?
Well, I mean, yes, yes, of course I want to respond to it. I don't necessarily think that that's, the enforcement letter that was provided, it was, there were two enforcement letters. One was to the building inspector, they were both dated November 11th, requesting enforcement of the zoning.
Uh huh.
There was also one to the chief of police, because they're the ones who have been, they've been ordained with the ability to enforce the noise bylaw. So, and the board of health is supposed to act in conjunction with them to enforce that.
Which may be true, but we only can hear appeals based on decisions by the building inspector.
Which is fine, because you know what? If, which is appropriate, if it goes to site plan review, and all these issues get, a lot of these issues are going to wind up going away, because they're all going to be dealt with at the same time. So, you know, if things are done, the noise will be abated and so forth. So I have provided you with a copy of the letter, of my, my November 11th letter.
Yeah, I've got that in front of me.
Mr. Chairman, although not a sitting member on the hearing, the November 11th, 2015 letter that council addresses specifically requests relief on five items, which in the petition for hearing subsequently on the appeal are items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Items 1, 7, 8, and 9 are not included in the letter of November 11th, 2015. And thus, based on opinion of Town Council, I don't see how we can review those.
And that's fine, because as you might be aware or not, I had filed a writ of mandamus. There's a pending action in middlesex Superior Court. So, and the reason that happened was, my November 11th letters pursuant to chapter 40A, section 7, says specifically, if the officer or board charged with enforcing zoning ordinances or bylaws is requested in writing, to enforce such ordinances or bylaws against any person alleged in violation of same. The officer or board declines to act, he shall notify in writing the party requesting such enforcement of any, of any action or refusal to act, I'm sorry, of any action or refusal to act, and the reasons therefore within 14 days of receipt of such request. So that was dated November 11th, 2015. Not, I, I phoned, got no response at all, heard nothing back, actually even, even called and said, hey, you know, you received my letter, what action are you going to take? Nothing happened. Therefore, we were forced to file a writ of mandamus, which is requesting that the court require that the town act in a way which was enforcement. I filed that on January 15th, I believe. We had a hearing on a temporary restraining order, and that hearing was on January 23rd. Not until January 20th did the letter of denial of enforcement was issued. The statute is clear, 14 days. It was 69 days later that we got the letter, after we filed suit. So basically, our hands were tied. We couldn't do anything. If we had received the denial in a timely manner, then of course, our relief, which the relief is to come to the ZBA, we didn't have that available to us. So, we wound up filing a complaint, then on the 20th, when we received that letter, in order to preserve my client's rights with the ZBA, is when I filed, when I went ahead and filed the petition for the hearing. If I didn't, we wouldn't have preserved it, however, and I just want the board to know, there is a matter that's pending, there are motions that are pending that are going to be heard the end of April.
Okay.
But that's very important, because our position was, the failure to act was deemed to be a, was deemed to be an acceptance that they were going to act. So, I just wanted to give you some procedural history.
Sure, and duly noted, and I want to, I'll ask Town Council for an opinion on that in one second, but just on the baseline issues of 1 through 9, what we're willing to hear, I'm applying to agree with Town Council that those other matters are not properly before us, and so this hearing will just apply to 2 through 6. Are we in agreement on that?
Could we map those to Town Council's letter, where he lists 1 through 5, and then 1, 7, 8, and 9?
Well, you can map it right to her letter.
Oh, okay.
I mean, her letter of the 11th, clearly just, it's 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yeah. Okay.
2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
So, 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 so Jack, if you.
That's okay, Paul just didn't, we have 1 through 5, and then he's saying, okay, so, but there was no 6, so I don't.
Well, on your, on your petition.
Referring to mine, okay.
On your petition.
I was just, thought you were referring to Town Council's.
1 through 5 on the petition lines up with 2 through 6.
2 through 6 on the.
On the, I'm sorry, 1 through 5 on the original letter.
Right.
Lines up with 2 through 6 on the petition for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is fine.
And then I guess for Town Council, is there any relevance to this hearing on the building inspector's letter not being issued within the timeframe?
So, Mr. Chairman, the case law on that issue is very clear. Excuse me, and I cited it in front of the Superior Court in the motion for preliminary injunction. It is not a requirement that the building inspector act within the 20 days in terms of the type of requirement that would lead to a constructive approval. Okay? The building inspector is supposed to act within the statutory period.
Uh huh.
But if the building inspector does not act, the sole remedy is to do what the petitioner did, which is to seek mandamus requiring the building inspector to act.
I see.
But in this instance, the building inspector did act as soon as that was filed, so that issue is off the table. In any event, it's really not something we need to delve in too deeply into tonight's.
But, okay, so you answered my question, I was wondering if it's constructive approval.
But with regard to some of the extraneous issues.
Yeah.
Anything that was not part of the original request for zoning enforcement, isn't a part of any appeal, either to the court.
Sure.
Or to this board, because there's no jurisdiction over those issues. You cannot take an appeal of zoning enforcement requests until they're first been presented to the building inspector. So everything that was presented to the building inspector is properly before this board.
Okay. Great.
I just like to comment on it. That's not exactly, with all due respect, what my brother said, I mean, that's what their position is. And we don't have to get into it here, but, but that's not exactly, and there's case law that, that says.
And I'm sure you guys will battle that out in court, right?
Right, but, but it's important to know that, as you asked, you know, my brother over here, that what he's saying isn't like saying, oh, it doesn't say that. No, it says within a timely manner, 69 days isn't deemed to be timely.
Okay.
So, you know, but anyway.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to respond briefly, I understand that the statute sets forth a timeline, and the case law is very clear, that the failure to comply with that timeline does not result in a constructive approval.
Mm-huh.
There can be no constructive approval of the zoning enforcement.
And that, that was mostly what I was curious about. Okay. So, on that then, so now I'll turn, I'm sorry, I'll back over to you, and if, so if you could just limit your presentation to matters, 2 through 6.
That's fine. So which we're talking about, the buffering, you know, the landscape buffering, we're talking about the shielding for the external lights, the trucks not being able to make the maneuvers on the property, screening, the lack of proper screening, screening of the loading zones, and then, and then the sign.
Correct.
So, and, and just like I said, you know, I did want to give some background on it, and I did provide that, will Google, but just so, I don't know how many of you have lived here for that time, but these are all, these are all pictures. And these pictures are just showing that it's always been grassy area.
Do you want to just start those down there? Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Always a grassy area that abuts Forest Avenue. And that, and, and why this is important is because this is the crust of everything. I want you to, Mrs. Spinazola, they're not here to prohibit the use of the building at 60 Pleasant Street in its present manner, but rather to have the use of the building regulated, as it would have been, had they submitted to the, the plan review, to the planning board. When, when planning board does site, site review, it considers the following things. It considers the amount of increase of impervious surfaces and drainage to prevent flooding into public ways and neighboring property. The traffic, planning board on site considers the traffic of loading, unloading, the flow of traffic to impede, or the traffic, to, the trucks that would impede the traffic on the street. It would consider the location of outdoor apparatus, equipment, or dumpsters, all of which always need to be positioned to protect the neighbors from the intrusion of sound and activity. They would also review the lighting plan and make efforts to ensure that there's no intrusion into the neighbors, and of course, the landscaping and the buffering. And, you know, these are all standard and ordinarily done in site plan review. And had, and our position is, had the owner submitted to site plan review, these exact issues that I'm referring to that violate zoning are exactly what the planning board would be addressing. Recently, the.
And can I just ask you, what, what changes did they make in your mind that require them to do site plan review?
So, then I will bring you up to the next pictures here, and you can look at them. The pictures are, you'll see, showing, this is out, the view from my client's front door, and you see there's some slightly dumpster.
The current?
The current, yeah. Although now recently, they did put a tarp up in front of it. There's no, there's no buffering, there's nothing. The other pictures you'll see, and I'll pass them around, is now how the fence has been removed, what it looks like now. And as you go through, you can see, we have loading, trucks loading and unloading on the road. This is what my client looks at every night from her home, from outside. She's 92 years old, she's lived there. This is exactly what is, these lights glaring into her front window every night.
And so, are you, your representation is that those lights were not there, you know, a couple of years ago?
No, nothing has been there. So as, as I was showing you, this only occurred once the, the new owner purchased, purchased in 2014, and I believe it was like in 2015, when all this changed.
Okay.
And when the expanded use of the property.
Was that because the company that was there before, the air conditioning company, was dormant at that time, and just using it for bingo, or is it?
So, nothing was used on the side there. What is there now is silt and glass.
Ever.
And, no, there wasn't. There was, there was dead use. No one used, there was no way to access it either, there was only a fire lane that was there.
I see.
For the mechanical room that was there. And you'll be able to see what it looks like, is all these large trucks, they need to make their maneuvers on the premises, and they can't. So what happens is, they wind up trespassing and going onto my client's property. So, you know, I'd like you to pass these around.
Okay.
And here are some other pictures, which were large photos that were blown up, which has to do with from once the grass was removed, and now, and the impervious material was installed. This was September 2015, as you can see, flooding, complete flooding of the road. But important to note that the property over there where the material was installed and no longer grass, there's no flooding there as well. So here are some other pictures. So, the important thing for, for the board to consider, and I know that, you know, as my brother has indicated in his memorandum, indicating that there hasn't been an expanded use of the property, there clearly is an expanded use of the property. And I just want to, chapter 40A of zoning, section 6, sets forth zoning ordinances and bylaws would apply, and talks about when they don't apply, but they will apply to any change or substantial extension of the use, substantial different purpose, or the same purpose, the use of the property in a substantially different manner, or to a substantially greater extent.
Do you have any case law that sort of flushes that out, relevant to this?
I absolutely do, and it actually was quoted, my brother actually, in his memorandum, referred to, and there's a case actually on point, which is perfect, and is referred to. The case is Charles Powers versus the Building Inspector of Barnstable. It's a 1973 case. In fact, the case is perfectly on point. That case was a petition.
The Building Inspector of?
The Building Inspector of Barnstable.
Do you have these site on that?
363, Mass., 648.
Thanks.
1973. That case, in fact, the petitioners sought a writ of mandamus to compel the building inspector to enforce the zoning. There were two parcels there. One was a candle factory and a store, and the other was what they referred to as primarily dead storage, two parcels. The writ of mandamus was denied on the candle, on the, I think it was a candle factory in the store, because it was a similar use. However, the writ of mandamus was issued on the other parcel, because the court indicated that it was primarily dead storage, and now it became active merchandise processing, which is exactly what's occurring now. The side of that 60 Pleasant Street, it was never used for egress or ingress at all. As you can see, it was just a grassy area there. The fence came down, they put two building, two businesses in there mainly, and those two businesses consist of loading and unloading. Silt and glass, as, as you know, people aren't working in there, they're using that to transport material to sites. And as you can see in the pictures, these aren't just little trucks, they're semis, they're huge. They're not, and one of the requirements is that all the maneuvers should be happening on the property. I do want to further, Mr. Chairperson, when you were saying about that case, in fact, the case that my Town Council referred in his memo was the Welsh Filipino versus the zoning board of appeals in Newburyport, and they wind up citing the Powers case. Because what it did was, saying that the court in Powers defined what would be considered a change or substantial extension of property use. And the court invoked the familiar, a three-prong test, and said, okay, the first test would be whether the proposed use reflects the nature and the purpose of the use prevailing when the zoning took effect. The second, whether there is a difference in the quality or character, as well as the degree of use. And three, whether the proposed use is different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood. Clearly, we meet the, we meet the test of the second and the third, as well as all three, but it clearly isn't expanded use. So therefore.
So, so just walk, walk us through your argument on that, and how, how it meets those two.
Well, there's a difference in the quality or the character, as well as the degree of the use. Okay? The building has always been used as game, it was Fenwall and.
Sherwood.
Right.
The Gamewell?
Gamewell, all before I was residing here. And, and the way the property was used, it was accessed from 60 Pleasant Street on the main street. There was never a use on the side for egress and access over there.
Were you saying that bay didn't exist?
That's right.
That's a new bay.
Yes, sir.
And, so, I mean, it's obvious too, that had, and once I said, with site plan, they'd be taking all this into consideration. You can see on one of the pictures, we have trucks that can't make, they're backing down Forest Avenue. We have, remind me of what you call that machinery?
Moffett, or wheel drive.
Moffett's now, because they can't make the lift, that they're going down Forest Avenue.
Do you have those original pictures, the first three or four, the, the before pictures?
We've passed them down this way.
They make it all the way around.
Where they ended up.
And here's some old Google Earth pictures as well. And as you can see, the only thing that was there, this was the fire lane, so that, for access into the mechanic, into the mechanical room that was there. Some more stuff, yep. I just want to. I do provide, excuse me, so the specific, I just wanted to refer to the specific provisions of the, of the bylaws. Well, first of all, I think, as we all would agree, that the purpose of it was to promote the general welfare of the town, to protect the safety and the habit, of the, the safety of its inhabitants, and encourage the most appropriate use of the land. Which is the, I mean, I mean, and that's what the zoning is intended to do, to protect the neighborhood. In fact, you know, by allowing these. In fact, you know, by allowing these viol, I mean, well, our, the zoning violations right now are continuing. And basically, allowing them to continue, the town is maintaining a nuisance right now.
And I'm sorry, maybe you said, I missed it when I was looking at those pictures. So, you said, of the three-pronged test, there's facts supporting two of those. I think I heard the first one, the expanded use. What was the third one, fact on neighborhood, maybe?
Oops, I moved everything. When the proposed use is, is it here? Up three, whether the proposed use is different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood.
And to walk us through the facts supporting that?
I think the pictures speak for themselves. This was a, it's a dead-end street forest avenue, which I should have noted. So, there's no, like, curb cut for the trucks to turn around. You have a few things. You have intense traffic from these trucks going up and forth. You have these trespasses that are occurring. The violation of the zonings have to do with they're not making all their turns on the property, which they have to. I just wanted to- Zoning five point two, the loading requirements, have to do with, all loading spaces or loading areas required will be on the same lot as the building used, and they're intended to serve. No queues or backup onto the street. No loading facility will be designated to require trucks to queue on the public way while waiting to load, while waiting to offload. The vehicles are required, okay, no loading facility will be designated to require vehicles to back onto a public way. All turning maneuvers shall be accommodated on the premises. Screening, loading areas will be screened in accordance with Section five point four, which talks about the general landscaping requirements of the buffering and the screening of the perimeter landscaping, buffering between the residential and the non-residential uses. Clearly, like, as I said before, I mean, these are the things that are taken when we, when we just had the assisted living. These are the things that we're talking about, the glaring lights, the dumpsters, the sound. Now, these trucks also, my clients have been calling the police, well, you know, because they're the ones who, to log in the complaints on the noise. And it's occurring before seven AM and after seven PM as well. So, as we're saying, it clearly has to do with the physical expansion of the building. I know that the town's positioned, and they've said, well, it's not really enlarging of the structure itself. And it doesn't need to. It's enlargement of the floor area, which includes outside. And it's clearly, they're clearly outside, using the area out there. Completely different use than before. And we did try to address this earlier. I actually, last July, sent a letter to the property owner and met with another party and a different attorney there to try to accomplish this, see what could be done to avoid this. But nothing has happened. So, hence what brought us to the enforcement over here.
I think Stan's got a question.
Just to clarify, Stan, you said zoning is to protect the neighborhood.
Uh huh.
That's not my understanding. What zoning?
Well, it's-
Zoning is to define the, what the town would like to see the usage in various neighborhoods. And then, there are, then there are rules within that that perhaps protect the neighborhood.
Well, the purpose, I believe, it's to, you know, regulate the use of-
Regulate the use, correct.
Exactly. With the ultimate goal of preserving and maintaining the safety, welfare of the inhabitants of the town and its neighborhoods. I mean, that's inherent in what, you know, the bylaws are.
Question, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
May I, please?
The, your client's home, that's in an industrial zone?
No. So, that home, I mean, she's been there since, that home has been since nineteen twenty, I know you lived there since nineteen forty-six. I mean, at forty-nine, but it was prior to there. So, it was, it wasn't, it was residential at the time. And it is, it's pre-zoning on there, where their home, their home was built.
Well, there's a, there's a business right adjacent to her home.
That's right.
And that business is not in an industrial zone?
It is. In fact, it's, it's her, it's their property as well.
It seems to, they seem to say, share a parking lot, a big asphalt-
That's their, that's their property. It's the same property, that's nine years thirteen.
I understand, but I guess I'm trying to understand how the two adjacent properties, one's in an industrial zone and one is not an industrial zone?
Town Council, do you want to?
But then-
I believe that they're all in an industrial zone. I think what council is trying to say is that it's a pre-existing non-conforming-
Use?
Residential use in an industrial zone.
Okay, but it is technically zoned industrial. Okay.
Okay.
Is that what you were gonna ask?
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna also ask, this is, this, will it apply that this side of the downtown overlay district? Or is that pending yet?
No, this, this is part of downtown, right? The overlay district?
It is.
Goes all the way down to the train, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, it is, right? So, it doesn't stop at game well, at that building?
No, it keeps on going.
Okay.
Regardless of the industrial use next door, the business was never, Sixty Pleasant Street has always been access since Sixty Pleasant Street, not on Forest Avenue. There are children that play, that ride their bikes there. And the amount of traffic, the noise, the flooding, the continuous failure to make their maneuvers, the trespassing, is an expanded and extended use of the property, which is properly to be addressed by site plan review, which is, as I said, is just exactly what they would address, these same exact issues.
So, all right, just for argument's sake, let's say we agree with you. You've reached, you've passed the, you know, two or three-pronged test. And so then, we get into your two through six here.
Mr. Chairman, before you go there, can I just clarify the Powers test with regard to-
Sure.
What's in front of the board? So, there's two things that need to be determined. First, is there a change of use pursuant to the bylaws that requires site plan approval?
Okay.
And then, I cited the Powers test as an example of how you could determine if, if there, if it is non-conforming, how you determine whether there was a change of use. But the Powers test only applies if you're dealing with a pre-existing non-conforming use. For the first, the threshold matter, you've got to make a determination as to whether or not it's non-conforming.
And are you saying this property is not pre-existing, non-conforming?
I'm not sure to what aspect we are talking about it being pre-existing, non-conforming. I guess there are different provisions of the bylaw that are being cited. For instance, landscaping provisions, I presume, would not qualify with zoning bylaws currently. So, the question is, does the, with regard to the landscaping provisions, has a change of use occurred that impact those conditions? With regard to the parking lot layout, I'm not sure it's determined that it does not comply with the zoning.
It's, it's pretty clear in the bylaw, a hundred cubic yards of change, meaning material removed or brought in, would constitute a, you know, trigger site plan review. That did not occur here.
Say that again.
Hundred cubic yards of material brought in or removed, okay, triggers a site plan review.
And what?
And that did not occur.
What's your estimate of that?
Estimate?
Of that?
Not even, you know, twenty yards of grass was removed.
So, just, because, you know, none of us sit on the planning board, so enlighten us here.
Hundred yards of material is quite a lot, awful lot of material.
Just in general, though, on change of use, so just so we, we have a better, if you could just, everyone will have a chance to talk, everyone else, so. So, just in general, on change of use, so let's say, I don't know, they wanted to do something completely new at this building. It had never been done before. Would that trigger site plan?
Unless it was outside the box. In other words, outside the building specifically, for that particular use, outside, to remain outside and not inside the building.
Which is exactly what's happening, because they physically-
The use is inside the building, inside the box. Whether or not they have deliveries or anything like that, the use that they actually create, manufacture, build, whatever, for products maintains inside the building. Materials have no bearing on the use inside.
So, you're saying, if you had a manufacturing, I can't imagine how you'd do this. But they say you had a manufacturing facility that didn't have bays for trucks. A train rolled up next to it, that's how they unloaded everything, and then they installed bays instead. That wouldn't, in your opinion, constitute a change of use?
No.
Town Council, you agree with that?
The way I would interpret it is that a change of use means you're doing a use in a different use category in the bylaw. For instance, if you're changing from a retail use to a manufacturing use, that's a change of use. So, what the site plan review provisions state in Section nine point four-
One.
Two.
Two, yep.
The enlargement of floor area or change of use of a commercial or industrial structure in the commercial H, commercial D, or industrial zoning district.
And I think, I think we're all on agree, that there's no change of floor.
Well, no, you can't say that, because the physical expansion into the parking lot is the exterior use of the building, which is enlargement of the floor area into the outside.
So, there's a definition of floor area within the zoning-
All right, so let's hear that.
Of course, floor area is the total area of all floors of a structure computed using the outside walls of the unit in accordance with the State Building Code.
Inside the box.
Inside the building, yes.
So, therefore, any of us can go buy an industrial property, and I can do whatever I want outside in there and without having any regulation or use control? I mean, that's pretty much what's going on.
I think the statement was that the change of use that applies to what's inside the building, it doesn't address what you're talking about, either way.
No, but that's, but I, but we disagree. I mean, it's, you're, you're expanding outside of the use. It's not all happening. We're not talking about what's actually going on inside the building. As you can see, the, the, the business is an expanded use of it on, onto, I mean, they took down the fence, they did that, and it's all happening from Forest Avenue. So, it's not as clear as we're talking. And we're not talking about the fundamental use changing that.
Building inspector, is there, are there rules governing the removal of the fence and the removal of the grassy area?
Not under my jurisdiction, only because it's not a structure. You know, as far as, you know, say, zoning or planning is concerned. If it had triggered site plan review, yes, that would be probably addressed, just like any other project. You know, from a new project standpoint. If they had, say, if they had added on to the building, then there would be a site plan review, because they were, they're expanding the floor area. Parking does trigger, but-
The change, change of surface doesn't?
No.
And the size of that, the size of the change that has been made to the grassy area, that doesn't fall with-
Didn't hit the threshold.
Okay, doesn't hit the threshold. It has to be a certain size.
Right.
So, to play devil's advocate here, then, let's say, you know, somebody decided they wanted to take some manufacturing equipment outside and use it outside. Would that trigger? So, they didn't change the use, the use is still the same use. They just decided that they wanted to be outside, out in the parking lot, and that's where they started doing their manufacturing.
I'd have to look at that depending on what it would-
The question is, would it become a different use? For instance, a construction yard or landscaping business, you know?
Same exact, they're still making widgets, they just, they moved the equipment out into the parking lot. For whatever reason, they're making the widgets out in the parking lot. So, technically, the building hasn't changed at all.
I, I think, if the use has not changed in terms of the use category, and you don't hit any of the other triggers under site plan review, I don't think that constitutes a change of use.
But we're not talking about the fundamental use here. And in fact, what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, is exactly what's, what's happening, what's going on. Because it has, it has expanded. It has expanded the use of the building of, now they're using, it's expanded into the outside, into the outside parking area. And as, and this is exactly as Mr. Christopher just said, would, yeah, that would be with something that would be subject to review.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please.
Within this box, how many businesses are contained within this box now?
Right now, up to seven different type industry uses.
Originally, the box was for one business, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, now the town has allowed the box to be subdivided with multiple other businesses.
Right, allowed by-
Requiring different requirements for entrance and, and transport to get to their area, correct?
Not completely, no.
Well, why, why would someone go down a path that was not intended to, for, for an entrance to their part of the business?
Well, there are, I mean, there are entrances there that have been existing.
Correct. So, so now, these businesses have to fight for a way to get their stuff into that particular part of the box.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
And getting into the part of the box is causing havoc. Because you have multiple businesses trying to fend for themselves to get their stuff inside the box and get their stuff out of the box. That's the issue here. It's the subdivision of this box that is causing this problem. And, you know, if anyone saw this coming, they would have certainly objected to this and said, you know, you have to provide access to the, to the particular part of the box that these businesses want to get to. I think that's what the attorney is struggling to say to the board. Correct me if I'm wrong.
And also, it's not a parking area that's the big issue. It's formerly fenced-in grassy area, which wasn't, there was no allowance for parking in that area. Is that correct?
There was parking there in front of the other larger doors before. Stone was put down, but-
Was it grassy?
No, beyond the grass and beyond the next, it started, the grass started at the end of the door. Yeah.
With the number of businesses that are there now, different businesses, you said, I think, seven, someone has put up the number seven.
Yeah.
Are they properly permitted? Do they need a permit?
They've all been properly permitted, and they also have adequate parking, both on the other side of the building as well. Actually, there's more than the seven would ever take up at this point.
And if I could just point out with regard to the parking issue, the bylaw addresses that directly. An increase, expansion of a parking area by ten percent or more triggers site plan review.
And it was-
So, by definition, increase of parking by less than ten percent does not trigger site plan review. It's not a change of use requiring site plan review.
It's not parking, though.
Yeah, that's, I think, could we define parking?
Right.
Parking, all right, parking to me is you come down here to town hall, and you find a place to park, and you park, and you're there for a number of hours, minutes, whatever. Whereas, I think the pictures that have been provided show trucks turning around, they're not parking, they're loading or unloading. So, parking and unload, parking versus unloading, loading are two different definitions. Okay.
Yep, I think that's correct.
Is it within, within the realm of possibility that this could go back for a site plan review? Or is that, that window shuts forever, it's not something-
No, that's actually totally possible. And matter of fact, the owner of the building agreed to do that in the springtime, because he was going to redo the whole parking lot. So, there, there won't be a chance for a review of all the screening, the parking, and all that nature at that time, when it's more appropriate for to have the work done.
And that would be done by the-
Planning board, yes.
And we would, and, and, and that-
Which the, which the owner is a member of.
I'm sure he'd accuse himself.
Yes, yes.
And we would, you know, let, let the pending lawsuit, let it sit until, until the site plan review. I mean, that's what we're asking you guys to do, is on the board, to direct this to site plan. And we'll, and we'll sit back and wait, I'm not gonna, I won't pursue until, because this is what we're trying to accomplish. You know, that was it.
I guess my, my thought was, if, if that's the case, and we've not heard from-
and we, we've not heard from, from the attorney for the, the property owner, why are we going forward with this hearing and having to spend a lot of time and, and effort in creating a decision if in fact ultimately it's going to go before site plan review in what sounded like the relatively near future? Because we are in springtime already, uh, and where the, uh, the Appcom at the Appelli will have an opportunity to, to, you know, present the issues that are, you know, of obvious concern to them.
It's a, it's a fair question, why are we here?
This is the first time I'm hearing this.
Oh, okay, so you did not know that the site plan was, okay.
If, if we had, we wouldn't have been here.
You're gonna get your full chance, but is in fact a site plan pending?
I'm not, I like, when I get up at the mic, I'll answer that question fully. Yes, there are things going on, but I don't want to answer that in piecemeal.
Okay.
Do you folks want to say something with an opportunity to speak, so if I can?
Yeah, so if, if you're, so just come to the mic, why don't you switch with her, state your name, your address, and then, uh, you know what, I'm sorry, we usually do public comment second. So I'm gonna turn it over to Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Efron. I represent Sixty Pleasant. They are the property owner, and they have obviously an interest in this matter because it is their property that is the subject of the zoning enforcement. I did file a memorandum with some attachments, both electronically and hard copy, which I hope you've had an opportunity to review it. One of the reasons for filing that, in addition to the legal argument, was frankly to put before the board, which petitioner has not done, the record that the building inspector had when he rendered his decision. He had all of the historical building permits. He had the building permits being applied for. He did the analysis on each time a tenant came in for a building permit of whether or not it would trigger site plan review by reason of the triggers. And Mr. Siegel, with respect to your comments in particular, the appeal here is on a matter of law on enforcement. To the extent that the site plan bylaw may need some help, because it is a bylaw that is not triggered as easily as other municipalities' bylaws, that's a matter for another meeting, town meeting at another time. So the building inspector, doing his job, of course, has to take the bylaw as it, as it exists. And he has to take cognizant of the records that exist. And it is upon that that he made his ruling, and his ruling was correct for a variety of reasons. Now, just to get into a couple of the, the items that Attorney Hathaway said, and then I will kind of get into that, including the issues on site plan review upcoming that have been asked about recently. To create some situations in the record, this woman has only owned the property by record deed since 1977 into the revocable trust. With respect to the property, as I indicated in my memorandum, the property is no longer separated from the welding shop and the automotive shop. It is no longer separated because Mrs. Spinazzola and her late husband, along with, I believe, her brother, who owned both properties at the time, applied for and was granted a variance and special permit from the Board of Appeals back in 1987. The, the relevance of that.
So that's exactly what I'm wondering.
The relevance of that is it joined the parcels as a single parcel in the industrial zone. It says, "The two lots would be combined into one, upon which there will be a two-family dwelling and a new shop." So to the extent that this was a separate dwelling, entitled to be treated for buffering and screening purposes as apart from an industrial use by their own voluntary action, they waived it. They are an industrial lot upon which there exists by right a residence, by right of this board action. But she can no longer avail herself of the screening and buffering arguments ever with respect to this bylaw. If she wants some screening, she should get some screening between her house and the lot that's being operated by her, her, her son, which is, which is a complete and utter pit in eyesore. And is, and, and if you compare it to the way that my client's property is being developed, the board can conclude for itself which property needs screening. But for the legal argument, the precise legal argument, this is now one property, the, the dwelling and the body shop are one property, and you have to treat it as such for purposes of that.
I think they've said as much. So Town Council, can you weigh in on that? I mean.
So the, the provision of the bylaw is section five point four point two. Where a lot containing a non-residential use joins or faces a residential district or residential use, landscape buffers shall be provided at the perimeter of the lot to screen parking and other vehicular service areas. I, I think my reading of this, I don't know that it makes a difference that it's partially residential and partially industrial. There is still a residential use on that lot.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing. I'm not saying that the landscaping requirements are applicable because the, you know, the, the site predates. It was already developed before the landscaping requirement was put in place. But I think if we're looking at a fresh development going on to this lot, and you have a partially residential and partially industrial lot next door, I, I don't know that this provision would not apply.
And just for clarification, that, what you just read doesn't speak at all about the zoning of a joint property. It's the use itself.
Yep, or faces a residential district or residential use.
Right.
So if it isn't a, if there is a residential district, yes, it applies automatically. But if it's a residential use in a non-residential district, it's requiring.
That's my reading of it as well.
So with respect to the permits that existed, Mr. Danner, in one of his questions, used the word dormant. I, I think it was a good word. And it should be distinguished from abandonment, which has nothing to do with this case. The Powers case, most respectfully, is completely mis-cited here. This is not a non-conforming use case where you're trying to determine whether or not the property owner has exceeded the boundaries of his permissible grandfathered use by change. All of the uses of this property are authorized. This is not a non-conforming use case. Powers is one of the most famous zoning cases in Massachusetts. It's cited a million times. It is cited in non-conforming use cases to determine whether or not a change in a prior non-conforming use has been such so as substantially alter it so as to require a special permit. It has no application here, and it has no application determining whether it's a change, there's been a change of use. The determination here as to whether there's a change of use is whether or not there's a change of use sufficient to trigger the site plan review bylaw. And frankly, repeating what the building inspector said, there hasn't been as of yet. Because the very specific criteria of nine point four, which I don't mind admitting to you, because I do land use work in a lot of towns, is very liberal, simply was not triggered by any of these. Now, my client went.
Just, just to, can, does someone have nine point four, just to?
You got it as well. It's in my case. That's the zoning bylaw right there.
Okay. Give me extra copy of your letter.
Uh, one more?
Yes, one.
I just gave him mine. Do you want to read the relevant sections, just so we're on the same page?
Section nine point four point one says that site plan review shall apply to the construction of a commercial or industrial structure in the commercial A, commercial B, or industrial zoning district. Clearly not applicable, there's no construction going on here. Section two, which I cited earlier, and I believe that's the applicable section, the enlargement of floor area or change of use of a commercial or industrial structure in the commercial H, commercial D, or industrial zoning district. And then the question is, is there a change of use to a commercial structure in the industrial zoning district?
And, it's a question for, for you, Jackie. Do you agree that's the relevant section?
Right, enlargement of floor area, but it says or.
Nine point, so nine, four, one, two.
Nine, four, one, two.
I, I, I didn't say enlargement of floor area and change of use. I said, the enlargement of floor area or change of use of a commercial or industrial structure in the commercial H, commercial D, or industrial zoning district. So it does require the change to be to the structure.
Okay, and so Jerry, are you saying that the Powers case has no bearing on, on defining change of use?
Of course not. It has nothing to do with it. Powers case is only a case whereby the extent of someone's use of the property in a non-conforming use situation is tested as to whether the scope is permissible, either because it's grandfathered or because it was specially permitted. But it has nothing to do with, it shouldn't have been cited by anybody.
You agree with that?
That's the point I was making earlier, Mr. Chairman, is first, the board needs to make the threshold determination as whether there is a non-conformity. And if so, if, if it makes a determination that there is a non-conformity, then does, was there a change of use that extends that non-conformity?
But there's nothing in the record even alleging non-conformity.
No, I hear what you're saying, I'm just wondering if you can apply, if the property apply that three-pronged test to, to make a determination of change of use writ large? Who cares whether it's non-conforming? I'm not.
There's no case I've ever seen that does that, because Powers, the whole Powers doctrine, there's books on Powers, alright? There's, there's thousands of cases on non-conforming use in Massachusetts. And they all start with the Powers test, because it's what stood the test for four years.
I hear that, so let's put non-conforming aside.
It's never been used to, to apply.
That's my question, because you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that when you're talking about an extension or an expansion of a conforming use, I don't think that that triggers site plan review.
Well, nine point four, one, two clearly does, is, it's.
Well, except, well.
A change of use, right, so then.
A change of use of a commercial or industrial structure.
Okay, but putting that aside.
What that gets to, though, is it's a change of use in terms of your, your table of zoning uses. If you're moving from one to another. So for instance, if you have, you have a, a little strip mall, right, that has five or six small uses within there.
Sure.
And they come in and, you know, it goes from being a convenience store to, you know, a, a greeting card store. It's still the same use, it's still a retail use. It doesn't trigger site plan review unless, if you flip to another thing where they need, they increase the zoning, I mean, the parking requirements by more than 10%. So then you, you have different ways of triggering the site plan review, but I think that it was intentional for it not to trigger just because you're going from one type of, you know, one company doing the same use to another company that does the same use category but differently. Because then you're gonna have site plan review.
And I think that's what we're struggling with right now, because clearly there's a change of use going on here.
There's a change of user.
Not, not even that, there's a change of use in, in, sort of colloquial term. I mean, you know, there weren't huge trucks driving that, that street before.
Yes, there were.
There was not a bay there, I saw the two pictures. There was a bay.
There was an opening there that was used for trucks. Again, to go on to Mr. Danner's use of the word dormant, this is a conforming use, permitted use case. You have to look at the entire history of the uses of the property. What Mr. Spinazzola really has an issue with, and he can use his own words, and I do not want to put words in his mouth at all, is for the period of time when the Gamewell property had become dormant and was used solely for bingo, the intensity of activity that was in that building for the past 80 years was done.
I hear you, I hear you.
And as any person would, as I would, if I lived there, he's not as happy as he was not to have a vibrant neighbor across the street.
So you're, you're telling me right now that that right there, which is now a large loading dock, that was still accessed by trucks?
Absolutely.
Back in the day when the building was used?
Absolutely, and the, and the, that is correct. And the, and the fence, the fence was not always there. The fence was put in and extended at the time when Gamewell stopped basically functioning at the property for security purposes.
And, and we're gonna let, we're gonna let you, don't worry, you'll, you'll have your, your chance. But putting that aside, let's say that that wasn't, you're saying even still that wouldn't change, uh, uh, trigger a change of use according to our use table?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and additionally, remember, the removal of the fence in and of itself is not part of the appeal proceeding.
Is everyone clear on that? Because I think that's a, okay.
So going back to what happened here, when, when my client went to, to look for the property, he did his due diligence, he saw all the building permits that are in the file, he concluded what the uses were, he knew he was in both the industrial zone and the Ashland Downtown District overlay zone. It's really got a full number of uses, and he's used them. So he, first thing he did, for his own business, United Solutions, he went in, he got an innumerable amount of building permits, and he fitted that up. He then went in and started to rent the inside for tenants. He went ahead, and for each particular user, they went down, they saw Mr. Christopher, they gave him a detailed application, he asked the right questions, he did a parking analysis, and they got permitted, alright? There's one that's coming in there soon, the permits are on their way, they haven't yet been issued. And if they're not issued, they won't be going in there, we believe they will be issued.
I don't think anyone's contesting that, that it's fully, you know, permitted inside.
So what that means in terms of the legal aspect of the correctness of his enforcement decision, which is really all we're here for tonight, is he was well in his, within his rights to deny the, the request for zoning enforcement that are, utter before you because he found, A, no change of use, B, no site plan trigger yet. And as a result, those particular things complained of were not things that he needed to issue an enforcement order on. Now, we have raised in our memorandum legally, not only the existence of the prior permits, no change of use, but we've raised an argument that I think is serious at the end of our memorandum that I want to present, and I want you to think about, and I want Town Council to weigh in. And it's a statute of limitations argument under 48.7. And the statute of limitations argument goes something like this. For uses for which building permits have been issued and have been in existence for over six years, for those conditions that were in effect at the time of those uses, and if those conditions in fact were zoning violations, if you don't complain about them for six years, you're out. There's been no screening, ever. We know that. We're not saying that we removed any screening, they're not saying we removed it. They're saying, well, you need it because you should have had site plan review. You don't, if you don't, if you don't get, you don't get to that question, most respectfully, because the condition being complained of is barred from enforcement under 48.7. The same thing with the so-called queuing issue. First of all, you have no evidence in the record, other than the statement of council, of any kind of quote queuing. What you do have, however, in what I gave you, which is specifically the photographs marked in, in, and I've got some extras if you want them. I think I'll give them, because I don't know who printed these things out. This photograph is a depiction of my, my client's property, but primarily Mr. Spinazzola's property, and the way he's maintained his property, not before, but since my client has moved in. What he has done is he has deliberately parked vehicles in the right-of-way. The red-hatched line is the right-of-way. He has parked them on his side of the street, two of them essentially as boundaries, that white van and the, the yellow, I guess, haul truck on the left. And then he's parked right outside my client's fence. Why has he done that? To impede trucks. He's creating the unsafe situation, not my client. When my client visually inspected the property before he moved in, these trucks weren't there, he was conducting his business on his property, he had his vehicles on his property, there was plenty of room on the roadway. He's the one that's created the unsafe situation. He's illegally parking his cars in the right-of-way, and he's doing it deliberately to create an obstruction. He's doing it so as to impede vehicular traffic from going in and out of that location, which they're perfectly allowed and authorized to do. So despite the fact that he's proved no kind of encroachment or design defect, and it doesn't apply, he's created the situation. Secondly, if he's really suggesting it's a trespass, that's not a zoning violation. There's a remedy for a trespass. You go to the district court, you seek a trespass complaint, you, you try to prove your case to a clerk magistrate, if it issues, then you go have a trial. So, wrong argument, misplaced, barred by statute of limitations, and again, most respectfully, not before you. The other, the other two, the two items that they mentioned really were lighting and the sign permit. There's, there's a permit for the sign. I don't know what else to tell you. How can it be an illegal violation if the sign's permitted? The sign is permitted. I don't know what else to tell you. It's permitted, it's not illegal, it was appropriate for him to deny a request for enforcement on something that he examined, looked at, and permitted. With respect to the lighting, there were lights on for many years in the same location. All my client did was he installed better lights to flow downward, to basically prevent, quote, "light pollution," as we all know, so as to basically not have those lights shine across the street. But again, they've been there, they're in the same location, they weren't added, they've been historically there, those conditions existed before, and, and that was, that was the reason why he denied, denied the enforcement request. So, you know, the, I've obviously been more detailed in the writing, but I think that's an honest summary of the positions that I would take. summary of the positions that I would take.
That's great, and don't get up yet. Do you want to respond to any of those legal arguments?
I'm a little bit confused with regard to the statute of limitations issue. That presupposes that the landscaping is non-conforming, and that the permits were issued improperly, but with a building permit. And when that happens, that sort of use is protected after six years. It's protected not as a non-conforming use, but as a non-compliant use, which is a less desirable form of relief. I think if you're looking at it objectively, if it's non-conforming, when they did that, their best argument is it remains non-conforming.
No.
Has the fence been there six years?
Has the fence been, the fence has been there for many years, yeah.
So the argument that a statute of limitations provision would apply, would be an argument that when those building permits were issued, they did constitute a change of use, therefore the landscaping requirements would have to have been met at that time. If they didn't constitute a change of use at that time, the landscaping remains as always was, pre-existing non-conforming.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the condition on the ground hasn't changed. We agree there's no screening. To the extent, to the extent screening is a violation, because Section 5 of the regs has come into effect a long time ago, I don't exactly know when the general regulation, Section 5 is in, but it's in for a while, long, long time, at least over 10 years. Since the use of those premises is basically protected by a building permit, they don't have an unlimited time to go out and complain for those violations, all right? The lack of screening is there for forever, okay? And so since the building is in a proper zone with building permits, my position is that statutes of limitations do apply.
Are you saying that if the situation arises where site plan review is required, that screening is off the table and not considered?
No, not at all. Because, because when you, when you trigger site plan review, for all intents and purposes, you are basically relieving yourself of the benefit of all protections, including statutes of limitations, because you are the development proponent at that point. And when you are development proponent, you can't at the same time say, I want to propose do this, and by the way, you can't hold me to the zoning law. That's just not the way it works.
But to clarify, Mr. Chairman, the landscaping is pre-existing non-conforming, if it's in violation, it's pre-existing non-conforming, and it would keep that status until there is something that triggers a change of use, requiring the site plan review. So if nothing in the past has triggered that, then the, the argument that there is a statute of limitations is irrelevant, because it's pre-existing non-conforming. You don't need to rely upon the statute of limitations. If there is an argument that one of those previous permits did trigger site plan review, and therefore they should have come into compliance back then, then the statute of limitations argument comes into play, which is to say that, okay, sure, we should have made a compliant eight years ago, but we got a building permit, it's been more than six years, therefore you're not allowed to enforce zoning against us. But that's a separate issue as to whether or not, it's not even a violation, because there was no triggering event.
That's right, the clock hasn't started ticking.
Correct. So for his, for his client's perspective, they're better having the non-conforming than they are having the non-compliant, because you can't expand a pre-existing non-compliant use.
So they are gonna have a site plan review anyway, because-
Well, we haven't gotten to that.
Let me speak to that, all right? It's really, it's really not before you, other than there was a direct question asked, and I think you deserve an answer to a direct question, that's kind of the way I conduct my business. So, Mr. Dudley's plans for the building, which were for his business reasons, let's get some tenants in there so I can get some rents to defray the monstrous costs I paid for my building, and the monstrous cost of the capital improvements, and then, once I've stabilized the property and gotten that happening, then I'd like to go out and approach the outside of the building, and I'd like to go out and I'd like to expand the parking area, and I'd like to go out and then put a drainage system in there, which you're gonna have to do when you have parking reviewed. And I'd like to think about connecting the parking area, so instead of making the turn down for us, we'd like to explore that. Now, I know that Mr. Dudley has retained engineers, but they have not started, but will be starting over the next couple weeks, the engineering necessary to determine what he can do, how best to do it, and it is my understanding, as recently as a conversation yesterday at 5:00, that once that occurs, it will definitely trigger site plan review, because there is no question that he will be making and seeking approval of exterior changes and alterations that would constitute a change, and will be likely expanding the parking area in a manner that would absolutely trigger site plan review. And of course, although because it was mentioned, I don't know what Mr. Dudley's plans are for reelection, maybe he'll tell you, but he won't be sitting on that case if he's on the board, and it's more likely than not, than when that thing is presented at the first hearing of the board, there'll be a board that does not include Mr. Dudley, and of course, you're not gonna sit on a case that impolishes your property.
So, so, still in my mind, is it, does that preclude our postponing a decision until after?
Yes, it does, because here's where the, Ms. Hathaway argued in the beginning, disagreed with town council, in my reading, that somehow there's a constructive approval position if the, if the building inspector doesn't respond in 14 days. I'm telling you, there isn't, it's just directory. The only, the only constructive approval is if you don't give a decision within 90 days after you close the hearing, that is a constructive approval. So you must render a decision on the request for enforcement unless it is withdrawn. Absent that withdrawal, you must, you must deal with this case, and it takes the affirmative vote of three of you to overturn the building inspector's denial of enforcement under the law.
And what if we don't close the hearing for a while?
You have to close the hearing in a certain period of time.
Yeah, there's a time.
What's the time?
That time can be extended by the agreement of the applicant, though.
Can be.
Just like we do with other, our 40B cases, we extend, extend, extend.
So, so it is within the realm of possibility.
The other matter I'd want to just comment on briefly is this quote lawsuit that's filed. The lawsuit is pending, motions of dismissal have been filed, primarily on the same ground that you raised in the beginning here, exhaustion. For the same reason that you can't consider the other matters that she didn't bring, the court can't consider anything until you act, because you, again, neither you nor the court has original jurisdiction to opine on matters of enforcement. Building inspector has to make his call up or down, and then it goes through a mandatory process that involves a step here, and then if either party is dissatisfied with what this board says, then both parties have rights of judicial review.
Okay, I'm gonna, more questions for him?
Well, it's still not clear to me. It seems like there is some room to negotiate, so that we don't have to close the hearing so quickly to see how, what they're gonna do going forth, and we can put a time limit on it.
I would object to that, on behalf of the property owner. We don't want to be under the hammer of the, I'd rather have you decide the case, and have the parties be able to proceed in accordance with law than to be under some hammer to basically negotiate, if you will. If and when site plan review is applied for, it'll be dealt with in the normal course. But I'm not telling you-
But then if the site plan review is dealt with, that sort of makes our efforts-
That is not true, because she requests zoning enforcement as of November 11th. Her position is, as of November 11th, there are alleged violations of the zoning law. Your building inspector, in the forms of his job, disagreed. She properly and timely filed an appeal of five of those items. It has been properly noticed, and it is here. We represent the property owner, and why aren't we entitled to an adjudication as to whether or not he's operating legally? He's got a mortgage on the property, his bank was sued by her, we think improperly, for the purpose of intimidating them not to make further loans.
Yeah, so, so, let me just put it to town council for a second. Can the petitioner unilaterally request an extension?
Yes. The board should take into consideration the impact that has upon the property owner. But it's the, it's the application of the petitioner, and generally, a petitioner seeking a continuance would be granted one. I think that this is a little bit different, in the sense that you are having another owner who is impacted by it. I certainly wouldn't want to see the board keep it open indefinitely. And I don't think the board really has any power to order the property owner to file for site plan review within any particular time period.
So you want to wrap, I mean, actually, you can get round too if you want, so why don't you guys switch? Sure, of course. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, 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 great. All right, Jerry, I'm gonna give up the seat.
Good evening, everyone. Brett Spinizzola, Forest Avenue, Ashland. I personally was hired by the owners of GameWell, Dave Mendera, to seed and loom the area from the corner of the access drive to what was a mechanical room only. I spread 50 yards of loom in that area, four inches thick, I seeded it. They told me the area was, was for drainage, once the underground tanks were ripped up. So, after that, the building was vacant. I maintained plowing for the town, for the bingo hall, for about 15 years. There were no lights on the side of the buildings, there were no, no amount of traffic like that.
Are you saying that there was no lights that were on, or there was just, they were just out? They were there, or they were just out?
I don't believe they were even there. There was a couple man doors, that's it. Now there's a bay on the corner he's shoved in, all this since legal processes started in June, and it's been a big circle. Everyone's referred you to go to this, this people and those people, it's a big circle of, and nothing is being done. We have lights in our living room right now, anyone can come by and check them out. You know, 2:30 a.m. deliveries of glass. I, I was rudely awoken at 2:30 a couple weeks ago, we've never had that before. There are three more bays on the parcel adjourning the railroad tracks that have been carved in there since this all started, in some sort of shack that has been painted the same color as the building. I don't know if you noticed or not, but it's there. I don't understand how, the trucks can't even make maneuvers back there. If I don't park my things there, that turns into a cul-de-sac. They drive right on our property and make a big sweep to go in there. I've used that spot for years, you could Google Earth as far back as you, as you wish. And I'm sorry if I'm not Ernie Bach and have nice things there, but none of my stuff is visible from any other house, with positioning that I use of trailer boxes there. They're painted, you can't see it from the house from my tenants or other tenants. You know, if I did have nice cars down there for sale, they'd be 120 inches of water. And I don't know how that's anything but a pre-existing non-conforming building. His building touches the railroad tracks at the very back. You have to go like this between to get the actual building and the fence. It's as pre-existing non-conforming as it ever could, anything ever could be.
Questions?
I don't really know what else to say, it's just real tumultuous going.
There's, there's been a reference to the fence that was, it's depicted in these photos here-
Yes, sir.
-as not always being there. What's, what's your-
I grew up there, sir.
What's your situation on that?
There's always been a fence there.
And you say there were no lights on the side of the building?
No. Nothing was illuminated like that.
Well, that's not my question. Were there, were there lights on the side of the building?
No, not that I recall.
And what about the, so the large trucks coming up and down, could they load there at all?
There used to be a trash truck that would pull in and go in and dump it, and he could pretty much turn, it was a short truck, he could do his own things in there, but that's all they had there. Now it's musical vehicles, they're probably calling each other to move things around to get deliveries in there. It's, it's like living on Route 9. It's terrible.
Okay. Any other neighbors? Yep, just come up, state your name, your address. Thank you.
My name is Steve Surway, I live at 7 Forest Ave, right next door to Mary. And the conditions don't stop at her house. They bother us also. We see the lights, we see the dumpster, we see the trucks going up and down, we hear the dumps being loaded, 11 o'clock one Sunday night, they were there dumping stuff in the dumpster. We look at this hideous-looking green drop cloth fence that he put up. There was always a fence, I've been there 11 years, there's always been a fence there that I know. And there's only been one sidewalk to the mechanical room, and at the far end, there was another driveway that serviced the back of the building. It was never like this now, we never had the flooding to the extent we're having now. And the lights shined into our house, too. I think, I can't say if the lights were always there, because they were probably never on, so I never would have noticed if they were there or not. But it has definitely impacted, and I happen to be home yesterday doing some work in the yard, and I couldn't believe the amount of traffic that I've seen coming up and down Forest Ave, it never was there before. So it doesn't stop at Spinizzola, it's affecting the whole neighborhood.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from your side wanna? You gotta come up to the microphone. We don't bite, trust.
Yeah, but we've got a lot of people behind you.
So same drill, just your name and your address.
Okay, the address of the property or my personal address?
Yeah, your personal address.
Oh, okay. The whole thing?
Or you live, do you live in town?
No.
Oh, just say your name and your, so your relationship to, what's going on?
I'm Tabitha Ruggles, and I work for Mr. Dud, John Dudley, at the property.
All right.
As far as the lights are concerned, we hired-
And I'm sorry, what's your position then, what do you do?
Oh, I am the real estate operations manager for the property.
Great.
So I help do some of the, the fit-ups that we built for tenants.
All right, perfect.
And as far as the lights are concerned, we hired Northern Energy, who was, who worked with Eversource, which was, I think at the time, maybe N-Star, to just do retrofit, like the exists, a lot of the existing lights, and their requirement is actually light for light, as far as the exterior lights and that kind of thing. So the lights that we did install were just, if there was a light, we replaced a light. So I guess that would be what I would say about that, as far as the fence goes.
When you guys took the building over, what you could tell, were those lights being used, or they just were sort of dormant?
Honestly, the, the building had sat for probably 15 years empty, so I honestly couldn't tell you what was on and what was off, there was just so much.
But when you swapped those bulbs out, were they even working?
I, I have no idea which ones were and which ones weren't.
Okay.
As far as that goes. And as far as the fence along the side where like the dumpster is and that kind of stuff, outside of some falling down gates, the fence actually is still standing there. Mr. Spinizzola parks against it. So.
The question, when did you do the light work?
Probably when you first, very first bought the building.
Which was?
2014.
Okay.
So.
But prior to that, you don't, I mean, in replacing them, the, the fixtures, shall we say, were there, just a matter of updating-
It was just, it was what they called a retrofit, so. If that answers your question on that.
That does.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Have you determined what was the cause of this flooding?
Honestly, I couldn't address that.
Has anyone determined what the cause of the flooding is?
Yeah, there's a high water table in that whole area, and whenever the railroad gets, you know, heavy rain, it directs towards, all the way down the neighborhood, down Forest Street, down the other street that's further up, that butts like Town Hall there, Tiltnav. It's everywhere, even, even McGonco gets a very big portion of, there are wetlands behind there as well, so.
So some of the pictures we saw were pretty severe.
That's a natural phenomenon, you're saying?
Yeah, it happens all the time.
It's gonna depend on the weather, and then the water table, if the water table's high, it pours for three days.
Right. Depends on how saturated the water table is at the time, and then if you get heavy rain or heavy snow, then it creates the flooding.
Yeah. And so in your opinion-
It's a, it's a reoccurring problem.
Did the grassy area, you know, ameliorate that at all?
Not that I can recollect, no.
We'll give you a chance.
Somebody testified that, oh, Mr. Spinizzola, that they put the grass and soil and turf in to absorb the water, some.
Yeah, but it only absorbed it to a point, even if it was just six inches loom, it's gonna get saturated pretty quickly. You know, it depends on what's below it.
When were the pictures of the flooding taken?
September two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen. Did they have it this year, too?
Yeah, with the amount of snow we had that previous year also, that was pretty bad as well.
This year, we didn't have much.
No, not as much, but we did have the heavy rain, so...
I'm sorry, what else?
So, it happens every year.
I'm done.
Yeah. Periodically, yes.
I'm done if I can go back to it.
No, no, we've got more questions. We're gonna grill you for hours.
Thank you for setting me up for that.
Just a question for you. We've been shown a photograph of the side of the building, I think, apparently before your employer acquired the building, et cetera, and it shows what appears to be a gate and then a doorway or an entrance into the building. Is that the only entrance into that side of the building that exists now, or have there been changes with other openings of bays?
Are you talking about that exactly, that exact side, or there's another, I mean, there was a, there's other spots in the building?
I'm actually referring to the side that's around Forest Street.
As far as like a garage door, whatever?
Yeah, something where you could access into the building, like a loading dock bay or something?
There's big openings, and there's been big openings in that side of the building. I don't know how else to answer for you.
Okay. What are you saying, but you put them in?
Did you put them, did you put them in, or were they pre-existing?
Some things were pre-existing.
Okay.
What was pre-existing?
I honestly couldn't, I mean, that's a lot of detailed answer, so...
The implication I heard before was that the loading bays were not pre-existing, that that one access to the utility room was the only one on that side. Is that incorrect?
I couldn't answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
She's taking the fifth on us? All right.
Done.
All right, all right, we're good. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. Okay. All right, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
The loading bay was added via permit.
Okay.
So, okay, and that's the only other entrance on the side? And that, and then there was a permit issued for the loading bay. But before that time, there was just that little utility room entrance.
Before that, there were multiple openings on that side, and the loading bay that was added on that side was permitted.
There were multiple?
It was an enlargement of the existing door.
Yes.
Oh, an enlargement of it. I see.
I think it's that. I think it was that.
Okay.
There's a better picture that shows it. Yeah, there you go. So, well, clearly, that's not there anymore. The bay there now. All right.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have pictures of the backside. There's three more against the railroad tracks that are carved in there, along with that one on the corner.
Okay.
But have been there.
No, no, they're...
No, they don't do.
But they're representing that only one was added.
The question was on the Forest Street side. That was what my answer was on.
But in general?
The items that she's talking about, I don't think are visible from their property, and I don't really know the answer. I didn't focus on anything. I didn't, the only thing we focused on, frankly, were the allegations made with respect to the interferences on, in front of their property in Forest.
But they're there and they access them from Forest Avenue, so, you know, semantics.
Okay. What do you wanna, I don't wanna keep your client up too late, so...
I'll be quick. Just one thing about the permits. We're not, like I said, we're not talking about the permits that were for all the offices that are inside there, inside Sixty Pleasant. We're talking specifically about these new, these new businesses. And had anyone envisioned that this was what it was gonna look like, site plan review would have tri, I mean, this is not what anyone envisioned. We were gonna have, you know, these businesses here and have all of this traffic. They're not businesses where people are walking in, buying glass, say, for Hilton. They are using for loading and unloading. They're transporting materials from there. So, it clearly has expanded out and we're using, expanded into the, into the outside. The permits to, and I, and I, and counsel had spoken about that, so... And we're just talking about these new, specifically the businesses that are on Forest Avenue, and they're new. It's very interesting to note that what exactly what site plan review addresses and considers are exactly the same issues that we're talking about here. Why? Why is because they are exactly what needs to be taken into consideration when we are expanding the use of a building, of premises, or changing. I mean, there's really, like, what part of site plan process do we think that the owners of Sixty Pleasant aren't subject to? Everything, because everything that has, that's addressed by the planning board and the site plan review is the same exact thing that we're looking for here. So, at this point, we do ask that you do have the power to direct that it do go to site plan. And, and there's, you know, I was very taken back by the fact that, you know, we find this out just tonight. Had we known about, oh, yeah, they were gonna submit, you know, perhaps we wouldn't have expended everyone's time and a lot of money to do this, and you could have made an application, filed a bond, and then there we would have gone.
So, are you, but do you still want us to render your decision?
Well, yeah, I'm looking, yes, for a decision to direct it to go to site plan.
Do we have the power to direct it to go to site plan? So, you just said we did.
What you do have the power to do, Mr. Chairman, is to determine that a zoning violation does occur. And that's, in order to comply with zoning, you need to go to site plan approval.
Right, so we'd have to...
You can leave them there, but you can't make them direct.
Right, right.
Right, you have the right to direct what needs to be done.
And so, I'm just, I'm trying to look at your letter again that you gave to the building commissioner here. Did you actually ever specifically, I know you enumerated a couple of violations pursuant to sort of the site plan review, but did you actually ever request a site plan review?
I can't. My procedure what I had to do was request that, you know, site, with the, do a letter of enforcement, request enforcement, and then the next procedure for me was then they had fourteen days to respond.
No, I get all that.
And then I would have, you know, come here and...
So, I guess you...
I understand your question, Mr. Chairman, which is the request for zoning enforcement does not state that the premises are in violation of zoning because they did not obtain site plan review, although that might not be true for some things. Let me just take a quick look here. Well, you know what? That's in number one, right, of the petition, which was not part of the zoning enforcement. So, I think you're correct that there's no...
I mean, there's no reference that I could see in the letter.
Request for zoning enforcement that asks that the applicant be required to obtain site plan approval.
And I guess, would that have been proper, a proper request? Would that have been?
Yes, it would have. If the argument is that it does not comply with zoning because it was required to obtain site plan approval but did not, then that is a proper request, presuming none of the defenses with regard to statute of limitations are applicable. So, if there is a change that occurred within, you know, within the past six years.
I don't wanna get too into weeds procedurally here, but so...
Well, I think it's a very good question, though.
Procedure been to, like, you know, please enforce the zoning in that this property, this change of use requires a site plan review, and then specifically, one, two, three, four, five? Is that, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but... But that wouldn't be a request for, I mean, what we had to do is we had to start with, you know, that there were violations for zoning, and the...
But there's only a violation from zoning if a site plan review was required. So, the initial zoning violation is, or enforcement that you're asking for is do a site plan review. Because if no site plan review is required, then none of those are violations, if I'm understanding this right, right?
But that wouldn't be up to us to request site plan review.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Could she request that?
The request for zoning enforcement could have and probably should have requested a determination enforcement by the zoning enforcement officer because site plan approval was not obtained.
Yeah, I think you should have, under nine point four, one, two, you should have said, look, hey, this change of use requires a site plan review.
That would have been up to the building commissioner to say, to do that.
Yeah, but, but my point is then...
Having not done that at the time building permits were issued, you then, under Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, have the right to seek enforcement of zoning, claiming that site plan approval should have occurred.
Well, my enforcement of zoning was not under...
You guys see where I'm getting at?
Yeah.
You understand the point, I'm... Yeah, okay.
And just to also comment about the water part, I mean, that's obviously from the impervious material that's there is, I mean, a grass loom, we all know that, is, would absorb, would absorb the water, would absorb the rainfall as it is. And that is another reason why the, you know, the flooding is so substantial, too. It goes into the road, goes into our property, but doesn't seem to be on their property at all.
She's requested enforcement of certain bylaws, right? She enumerates one through five complaints, and she cites certain bylaws. Those bylaws, they're only, you can only be in violation of those bylaws if they apply. They only apply if a site plan review is required. And so, but what she never requested is the enforcement of a site plan review. So, if you don't request that, how can you request, you know, correcting violations of something that you, you know, hasn't been applied?
The building commissioner has said the requirements for triggering site plan review aren't there.
Were met, right, correct. And I think if it had been me, I probably would have, I probably would have asked for the enforcement being, do the site plan review. Under nine point four, one, point two, it's required.
Let me just say something. The lighting, okay, is under a jurisdiction of, say, Board of Health, as far as, you know, that type of nuisance. Noise is also the Board of Health's jurisdiction.
I was wondering about some of that, these other avenues for you to pursue.
Yeah, right. Traffic is the police department's jurisdiction, not mine. So, as far as I see it, those aren't zoning violations. They are bylaw violations, okay, not zoning violations.
General bylaw.
Yes, general bylaw, and not my jurisdiction, so not my decision to make. I did refer those to the police department, to the Board of Health, and several other departments that could be involved.
Although, you know, if a site plan review had been necessary, it doesn't seem like some of this wouldn't be outside your purview.
Right, right.
You would have considered all of this, right? And in fact, if they apply for a site plan review, you guys will consider all of this.
Complaint board would.
Right, 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 right.
Right.
These other requests, or not requests, these other incidents, the dumping at three o'clock in the morning, for example, that is a police activity? Call the police?
Yeah, nuisance, noise.
And I'm not trying to, you know, pass the buck here, but I just, you know, we try to do things the way we're supposed to do them, you know? And so, I understand, I completely understand, you know, and I think it's troubling us that there seems to be a change of use going on here, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Right, it doesn't follow, there's no regulation that we could apply to it.
Right.
It doesn't trigger site plan review.
The change of use has to be a change of use per the, you know, the, you know, the use criteria. I'm just saying, it seems like it's not that about...
The agents of the town knew about this, though. I mean, there's no getting around that.
What's your point?
An agent of the town knew that there's a change of use of this building.
But what they're saying is, you and I are looking at sort of more from like a layman's person, you know, view, like, okay, yeah, there's big trucks coming down the street now, but that I don't think amounts to a change of use under the bylaw, which is what's troubling us.
As I look at the, at the current uses, the current tenants that you have provided, you've got United Home Expert, use industrial construction warehousing, occupancy permit done, a religious use, connect, I don't know what that means, Nikona Athletic Club, okay? Divine Stonework, so that's probably some movement of materials about. Flooring company, Stilton Glass, and a millwork company, so there is, but these are all things that have been permitted or applied for.
But those aren't the things that we're referring to. They're not the ones accessing on the side. And in fact, I mean, look, you're sitting there, and you have a big dumpster. Put the dumpster then on the other side. Go put it on the other side, so it butts the Tilton Avenue people. Why is it not there? Because someone complained, who lived on Tilton Ave.
And we hear, I think we all hear what you're saying. We're not sensitive to what's going on here. We're just trying to figure out if we have the authority to do anything about it right now.
You have the authority to direct what needs to be done.
Let me say something. Aren't there trucks and deliveries for Mr. Spinazola's business as well? And don't they periodically go down Forest Street, probably at different times also, for deliveries for materials for his business? Or does he not do any business at all? You know what I'm saying? In other words, it's an industrial zone, okay? You have businesses on one side, businesses on the other side. The fact of the matter here, okay, is that it's gonna go to site plan review, and they're gonna have their say. So, then those things will be addressed at that point. Now, I told that to her on the phone way back when she first called me, that that would happen, and Mr. Dudley also agreed to it, okay? So, so right here and right now is where it needs to go, that, you know, it's gonna go to site plan review whether or not you make a decision or not, okay? That's what's gonna happen. How?
Doesn't the issue come down to?
He's gonna redo the parking lot. I'm gonna have to require him to go to site plan.
Okay, I get it, but right now, this is before, so we gotta, you know, we gotta settle this.
I mean, doesn't the question come down to what is a legal change of use that would trigger site plan approval?
Yeah.
No, the way I saw it, no, because all those uses were in the book.
No, I understand.
No, 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 you're right. I understand your position. I didn't meet that criteria, but go, go ahead.
I guess I would like the guidance of town council on, under our laws. And I think you, way back when, you gave it to us, but I wanna be clear. What legally is a change of use?
Well, I think the first threshold issue you need to look at is whether that question's even in front of you. Was there a request for zoning enforcement based upon a change of use that didn't get site plan approval when it should have? And I'm not sure I can say that that actually is squarely in front of this board. My interpretation of the zoning bylaw would be that when you go from one use classification to another, that would trigger site plan approval. When you're staying within the same use classification and just changing the user, then that would not trigger site plan approval as your bylaw is currently set for.
Right.
What would be, let's state again, what would be a change of use?
We built a daycare there.
Okay. You've got... Or a restaurant.
It wouldn't be allowed anyway.
Yeah.
Because it's not in the list.
One of the uses allowed in industrial would be research laboratories and development facilities, allowed as of right. Then there's also alternative energy and renewable energy manufacturing facilities, also allowed as of right. If you went from one to the other, that's a change of use, even though both are allowed within the zoning district.
So, what about the sports thing that's going on there?
That's a good question.
Indoor recreation is included in that list.
But I think what he's saying is it's never been there before. Bingo.
That's recreation.
Indoor, bingo, the indoor recreation is twenty-two.
That's right. I thought you were screaming out bingo. I thought you guys were playing over there, I was like...
Oh, thirty-two? So, that would be how I would interpret the bylaw. I'm not sure the question is currently squarely in front of this board, but it certainly could be brought in front of this board in the future.
I don't, well, I also, when you said the change of, it's the change of the user.
I don't think if you're going from one user to another user within the same use category, that that triggers the site plan approval.
Right, and we're not talking necessarily about doing that, but what we're talking about is the enlargement of, we said, for expanding out into, into outside of the building, which...
Let me clarify that. Floors do not exist outside the building.
Wallstone. No walls, no floors.
No walls, no floors.
Right.
So, therefore, but like I said, so then therefore, we can just get a building and then conduct a business outside and do whatever, and that wouldn't...
They can run a hot dog stand if it's out, if it's on the list.
Well, all of these, all of these activities...
That's not what town council's saying, though. You're saying whatever was there before, what the use was, not whether it's on the list of approved uses.
So, if you have alternative energy, renewable energy manufacturing facility that has been conducted indoors, I don't think this will require a site plan approval if you start doing some of that outdoors.
No, no, right, I get it.
Unless there is some other trigger.
So, help us understand this, and so, let's say this is what has always essentially been a manufacturing facility, right? Is that basically what it's been? Yeah, manufacturing. So, if they went from manufacturing to, say, office religious use, would you consider that a change of use?
I would, because it wouldn't be allowed in the industrial zone.
No, no, what?
But it's an office, but that's what they're doing. That's what they're doing now.
I sure hope it is.
But that's what they're doing.
Religious not-for-profit uses are permitted as of right now.
Yeah, right, right, I'm not saying, but the question is, is it a change of use? Town council's opining that it is. I still... I still don't think that's before, so. You didn't ask for that. I think if you really wanna do this, you need to go back, ask for enforcement based on change of use, saying it used to be manufacturing, now it's bang, 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 bang.
But that, but that changed, but tho- those are new. Those are new since we, we, we started this.
Then you have to deal with it.
Well, yeah, I don't think you had standing before that, frankly, so.
I, I disagree, um, because of the expanded in, in.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. It's the hot seat there, so if you want, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, do, do you wanna give up the hot seat for a second, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I find myself in, in agreement with Attorney Hathaway's remarks that it, it makes sense to get it, make a decision. Um, I think we do need, I'd ask that frankly that you would consider closing the hearing, cause I don't think you're gonna hear any more new quote evidence, and, uh, and that a decision be made.
Just so you know, we almost never close the hearing until we, until we deliberate.
I got it. It's the second piece, and I, and I think, Mr. Chairman, when you were asking some of your most recent questions about the, the initial request, you've hit on, maybe it's a matter that's deemed unfortunate, cause you're all human beings here and you're sympathetic to trying to find a solution, which I commend. But this is a tough procedure to do that. It's not a permitting procedure where you can amend this and do that. It's, you're sitting as a court. You're reviewing a specific document that he acted upon. You can't make it say something, most respectfully, that it didn't. You can't say it should have said this. If she wants to pursue zoning enforcement again, she has every right to do it unless the building inspector deems it's a so-called, quote, repetitive petition. If she asks for something new, he has to deal with it. He may grant it, he may not grant it, and then it could take its course. So a lot of the discussion here has been about claims that really are not before you. And claims like flooding, where there's been no nexus between the alleged violations that are before you and flooding. How does not having the proper lights cause flooding? How does not have the proper screening cause flooding? So how does any of that cause flooding? So a lot of the evidence you're hearing of hardship and disruption, and for purposes of this meeting, I'm gonna accept all of it as made in good faith and true. It's simply not before you, and there's nothing that can be, can or should be done about it in this particular narrow proceeding, which is limited to whether Mr. Chrisifoli made a mistake in denying specific requests for zoning enforcement as phrased to him in writing.
I have, uh, more accurate information for the, the pictures of the flooding. Those were taken this February twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand sixteen, which was, also came with a four AM glass delivery. For that truck to do what he does, he pulls in to our property, he backs up, he does a five-point turn, beep, 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 and loud truck. Uh, called DPW at seven-thirty about the flooding. Called, they said they'd be by. Called them again at nine. They said they'd be by. Nobody came. Called Conservation at eight AM, spoke to her, very nice woman on the phone, said she'd be by. She did not come by. Called back at ten. Again, she said she'd be by. Uh, no show. I know that she inherited this problem, but she still could have come out and assessed it. Uh, all I'm getting here is a, a big runaround. They're passing the buck. This, this town, form of town government is not working. It's so, I, I don't even know the word to, to describe it, frustration.
Frustrating, seems like you. Yes.
We just want the lights, you know, these are not unbearable requests.
Okay, okay. Um, I think we're not gonna get any more information on this.
No, I don't think so.
Um, what time is it? Nine-ish?
We have more questions here.
Right, so you wanna stew on it, cause we're not gonna close the hearing, and so, um, we'll start deliberating next hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good, so, um, anything else?
I will say that we, they, they did point the li, the lights down, uh, on my request to do so, as well as the screening that they did put up. Uh, I did ask them to do that as well.
Okay. Okay, so, let's schedule part two here. Um, and it's, I mean, it's my expectation that we'll make a decision at the next, you know, at the next meeting. Yeah, I mean, both parties want us to, there's no reason not to. And I, uh, honestly, I think it'll probably be a procedural thing, but, um, okay. So when's our, Karen, what's, what's, what's our life look like in the ZVA here? What do we got coming up?
Uh, so the second Tuesday in April, our next meeting.
Twelve? I don't have it down. Twelve, you're not here? That's a perfect night to hold it. No, okay, so what's the next, what's the next availability? And now. Twenty-six. Jerry, we'd never have a meeting without you.
I won't be here on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, Lord, okay.
Unless you all want to come to Atlanta.
Well, we could have someone else sit in for you if that's.
I will not be here.
Okay. Right, so.
You wanna do the hearing on the twelfth?
No, no, we, we'll do the twenty-sixth. I'll bring.
We'll do it on the twelfth. My, my associate, Lieutenant McCarthy, will appear.
Excellent, okay. Twelfth, four for you guys?
Yes.
We have anything else on the twelfth?
We have the one thirty-three last evening.
Oh, we do? Yeah. What time is that?
I believe they're on an eight.
Seven, oh-five?
If we do have minutes to look at.
Yeah, right, so we do minutes, five minutes. I, I think we'll be done in an hour. Okay. Okay, so motion to continue until April twelfth at seven oh-five PM?
So moved.
Second.
On favor? Hi, opposed? All right, great. We'll see you then. Okay.